Okay, I'm gonna call this village board meeting for January 6th to order. Roll call please.
Joe Higgleberg.
Here.
Chris Narnie.
Here.
Bill Ranham.
Here.
Bill Walens.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Here.
Okay, confirmation of open meeting compliance. Caitlin?
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wanaquay Tribune on January 2nd. The final agenda was posted on January 2nd at all three village posting locations. I have a copy of the affidavits with me. And the final agenda and meeting packet were made available online on January 2nd.
Thank you. Next we have consent agenda. Would anybody like anything removed or look for a motion?
Move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Phil Walens.
Second.
Second by Bill Ranham. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next is public comment for items not on the agenda. Is there anybody here who would like to address the board on an item that's not on the agenda?
I don't have any slips for public comment.
Happy New Year, everyone. I'll make that public comment. How's that?
(laughing).
Okay. All right, then moving on. Our first item is a public hearing. Public hearing and discussion on action on preliminary plat and rezoned to PUD. PH Herd at Hills LLC, corner of State Highway 113 and North Division Street, AKA the Brineck property. Brian, do you want to lead?
Sure, sure. I think we're gonna start with a presentation by the applicants. And then we have this notice for a public hearing for the general development plan and for the preliminary plat. So, once the applicant's done with their application, I think we can move on to that.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody. Good to see you. Just to introduce myself, my name's Chris Sellers. I'm with Veridian Homes and thrilled to be here tonight to present Heritage Hills. Let me just figure this out there. With me tonight is Brian Munson, our planner that we use with Vanevall &amp; Associates, and Dan Day, our lead engineer with Denofield &amp; Associates, who combined have over 50 years of experience in working on master plan communities throughout Dane County and with Veridian. And so, a lot of lessons learned and we've made quite a bit of progress through the years. And we're excited to bring our newest master plan here to Wanaquay soon, hopefully. Building homes that enrich lives and realize dreams, that's the company motto that we live by and really it's critical in a time like this where we're trying to achieve, you know, that attainable price point because housing costs are going up so high. Housing variety. Integrate housing options in both format and price point. Build housing that supports the needs of a community and facilitate the housing that meets a resident's changing needs. So, when doing a big master plan like this, the first thing we do is really research, you know, the community and the village and find out what's going on and where is that target consumer group that we were trying to meet here. And so, thankfully for us, you know, a housing study was conducted and provided a lot of the blueprint, the roadmap for us here to follow on what is needed in Wanaquay. And the more research we did and analytics, it became interesting on that price point that we really need to try and hit here to address that missing middle that was called out in this report. I ran a quick data search today on the MLS just for the entire year of 2019. Average sales price in Wanaquay that for houses that were loaded in the MLS was 452,000. There was 228 reported sold or sales on the MLS. And of those 228, only 37 were under 300,000. So, it shows how that price point's going fast. In fact, Wanaquay's a municipality that's got one of the fastest rising increase of resale prices in all of Dane County. If you do want to buy a house, or of those 37 sold houses, the average age of those 37 houses that were 300,000 or less was 56 years old. So, the average year built was 1964 for anything, again, that was 300,000 or less. So, our goal is to offer something that can accommodate that entry level buyer and we're very confident we can achieve that in this community. Not throughout the entire community, but offer a product that can hit that consumer group. Next up, vibrancy. We blend architectural diversity with people-friendly designs. We have an architectural review committee internally so we make sure that no two houses are the same color or have the same architectural features that are next to each other or on the same street. We really do master plan our way through not just the development side, but also the building side. What separates Veridian from a lot of other developers or builders is that we do both. We develop the home sites and then we build the houses on the home sites. That helps us to kind of control that price point and have a better understanding of where we're going to be from a projection standpoint and can all but forecast more accurately what our ultimate sales prices will be because we control the entire process. Sustainability. Respect the natural features and heritage of the land. We're part of the Green Tier Program, which is a work with the county and representative inspectors from City of Madison and other municipalities to come out and kind of self-police, but also come up with or test out new methods for stormwater management in our communities. And this is a community that would, that we've already flagged and identified for potential to try some new methods that potentially could be used and of course will adhere to stormwater requirements. But, it's something that we take pride in too to kind of being on the front end of stormwater management because it is a big deal here in Dane County. So, without further ado, I'll get to Heritage Hills here. I'll hand it off to Brian Munson, who'll kind of walk through the different product types, the park layouts. We've been having quite a few meetings with staff and been making tremendous progress to date. And again, I appreciate all the feedback we're receiving to date and we're trying to incorporate that as quickly as possible into our design as we go here.
Well, thank you, Chris. Again, Brian Munson with Vanevall &amp; Associates. And happy to be here tonight to talk a little bit about the design of the project because this is something that we're very excited to bring to the community and reflect the planning that you've done to date and the initiatives that you've started and try to bring that into this project. So, of course, people are very familiar with the site, a very prominent site on the eastern gateway into the community. And we're excited about how we can be part of that entry sequence and feel as you enter the community and preserving some of that. Plan for residential, as everyone knows, quite a bit of grade on it, but an exciting site nonetheless, given its exposure to not just the community, but the region. The concept itself, as Chris mentioned, is prefaced on trying to deliver a variety of housing options. Not just at any one spectrum of the housing needs, but finding ways to have the full span of attainable housing, first-time homebuyer housing, move-up, luxury, senior-targeted housing, rental and owner-occupied opportunities. So, a broad spectrum of housing types, even typified into the single-family. And that the 318 single-family homes within this neighborhood will span a variety of different formats, floor plans, and price points. That's coupled up with our twin homes, which split into both market rate, for-sale twin home product, and senior-focused twin home product. The idea that we can diversify even just within that mode to allow different price points and formats depending on where people are in their housing needs. We've coupled that up then with our multifamily housing area there along the entrance. And then a nod to the preservation and exploring opportunities to preserve the farm center that's there and looking to find ways to integrate additional retail uses within that, but potentially also looking at, could we save some of those buildings or use them as a, the guidance for architecture if we have to replace some of them? So, we're excited to bring 135 acres of planned residential and mixed use into the community set within the confines of what's happening around us, but also the community as a whole. To walk through some of our target user groups, as I said, it's really prefaced on there's not just that. There are multiple target user groups within this. Just like there will be multiple phases of construction, we see this meeting needs of housing for a variety of different folks, whether they buy their first home here or already in the community. And we see this as the opening up opportunities for people to attain housing within the neighborhood in a variety of different formats. And as Chris mentioned, as the developer and builder, we can control both the architectural components, the price points, the formats, all the pieces of that housing and the build-out of the neighborhood are integral to the design of the neighborhood and are controlled by having that piece of each of the houses. As I mentioned, the first piece of our project will focus in on twin homes, split between market rate and our Haven Series, which is a senior-focused housing product. But, it's not just that. There's also carriage access twin homes, there are street access twin homes, there are twin homes that will have tuck-under garages to accommodate some of the grade changes that have to happen on here. So, even within these two categories, there are multiple formats, floor plans, and price points that will be delivered throughout the neighborhood. And as we start with that, those are, here's our market rate twin homes, kind of these purples. These are tuck-under here and these are flat site. But then our Haven Series is all of the blue here, and again, both in carriage lane access and street lane. That allows us to bring different formats and price points in a ranch style that would appeal to seniors and then deliver some open spaces in support of those. And then we have some additional market rate as our transitions between the single-family and the multifamily. The single-family spans carriage lane, single-family, and this would be more of a traditional alley configuration where the focus of the fronts are on the porches and the front facades of the houses. We've then taken the garage and accessed around the back. And interestingly, while we can diversify the price points by delivering these formats on more efficient lots, the living space of the homes themselves are very comparable to what you can find on a lot that may be 20 to 30 feet wider. Because really what we've done is taken that garage off the side and pivoted it around the back. Now, certainly there's differences in yard space that's delivered, but it allows us to then diversify the price points without compromising the size of the houses that can be accommodated on these. So, a lot of the floor plans, you'll find similarities between both the street access and the carriage lane access housing within the neighborhood. These are clustered in kind of the western portion here and then in the future in the eastern portion. So, we're not just clustering all one house type in one location. We're trying to find ways to blend those throughout the neighborhood and create opportunities for housing as we move through on a phase-by-phase basis. The other component of the single-family, of course, conventional single-family, something that's common in the marketplace. You can see, we have street access garages, a variety of different price points and sizes. Again, this is gonna appeal to not just first-time homebuyers, but spans all the way up to luxury and move-downs. So, we have a variety of different lot sizes, price points, and formats within this neighborhood. One thing I would point out as we go through this presentation is that all the pictures you see in this presentation are from Veridian neighborhoods. So, again, this is something that we've worked on for many, many years. We've worked through and learned from our neighborhoods, other neighborhoods, but the installation of these neighborhoods is something we've been working on for many years and are excited to bring that forward. So, as we look at these, not as a testing of theory, but a delivery of a proven product type that has been received well and continue to hold its value in neighborhoods that have been in place for 20-plus years. And we do that by focusing, as Chris mentioned, on not just lots and streets, but all the way to the front porch, the design of the homes, the architectural details, so that you have, again, that focuses less on the automobile and more on the people that live there where you have porches and front doors. You get street capes like this through just simple techniques of garage setbacks and architectural design that is consistent but diverse. Again, the single-family, the conventional single-family then forms the northern portion of the site, transitioning to more comparable units as you see up to the north, as well as units to the west, forming different transitions within the neighborhood. The multifamily portion of the site is located along the entrance and will be carefully designed and guided through the process. And again, this is just the GDP stage. This will have to go through a subsequent SIP stage that will determine site plan, architecture. But, really what we're looking at in the multifamily is to follow the guidelines of the R5 zoning, but have multiple buildings on one lot. So, we wanted to include that in the PUD. We're not asking for variances on architecture and site plan or coverage or any of those components. Rather, we want to have that be part of the documents so that everyone can know that this site is planned for multifamily and then it can move through an approval process in the future that responds and delivers the architecture that's consistent with what you have approved in other neighborhoods. As I said, the farm center mixed use is a piece that we are working on. This is gonna be one that's gonna have to incubate a little bit, both out of contractual obligations, but also out of the idea that we'd like to try to see, can we preserve some of the buildings that are on-site today, repurpose them to future retail uses, and find ways that that can continue to have that character and component that's there today, but transition into new uses into the future. So, when we put the GDP together, we try to identify potential uses, but we certainly recognize that not all of these uses would happen on this site. It's something that will, again, will have to go through a future approval process to allow it to respond to retail needs when it comes forward, but also the architectural character that we're trying to work through. Parks and open space is something that we've been working closely with the Parks Board and with staff, and we really appreciate the discussions that we've had. And we tried to design this to not just place one park, but distribute the parks throughout and really open up opportunities for parks placement in close proximity to each of the different sections of the neighborhood because the parks, much like the housing, will serve different needs depending on where they are. We do have a required dedication of 15.3. We're actually dedicating 19.7 acres of park space, again, spread throughout, and that's not including anything for the wetlands, the stormwater, or the open space. Those are above and beyond. So, we're excited to deliver a very diverse park component throughout the neighborhood. We're working closely with the community in terms of how do we develop theming. We understand that might be the wrong color tractor, but we'll work through that. (laughing). So, you know, we're working on the details of how these get designed and are excited we'll bring those back on a phase-by-phase basis. But, just to kind of point out some of that working relationship already, this is the original plan that was presented to the Parks Committee. There were comments and issues raised. We brought them back to illustrate things such as the ability to diversify the athletic field, to include soccer fields, lacrosse fields, multi-use fields, both different age groups and different formats. We looked at, you know, could we incorporate some basketball and some pickleball? So, we're already starting to take those comments as we receive them, integrate them into the concept plans so that when we get to each of these parks, we can deliver and work with the community to have a diverse park space and activity space within each of the different parks depending on what uses they serve. Those are all gonna be accent by trails. We have both north-south and east-west trail systems embedded into this plan, including off-street paths all the way along connecting Schumacher Park back to the intersection with Division and the trail system down into Village Park, a park north-south along Schneider, as well as a north-south connection that will go from our expanded park in the northwest where the Sled Hill is, through the neighborhood to the community park, down through one of the pocket parks, and then back out into our main system. So, we really want to try to give people opportunities, not just through sidewalks on both sides of every street, which we'll have, but also off-street path systems that will encourage residents of our neighborhood, of the community, and just anybody who wants to get out and move about from these spaces will have safe places to do that. We then finalize that with some on-street systems, which would serve more as commuter routes. But, we're excited to bring this trail system together along with the open space and the uses to give people both destinations to walk to and enjoyable places to walk in throughout the neighborhood. The final pieces, of course, stormwater management, as touched on by Chris, we're excited to not just have square ponds, sorry, Dan, but really have our stormwater management serve as both an amenity for the neighborhood, as well as environmental amenity for the region in finding ways to have cutting-edge stormwater management integrated into open spaces that look more like natural features. This is a stormwater basin that was built out in Smith's Crossing in Sun Prairie. And so, we see these as opportunities not just to have a function, but also have an amenity that serves the neighborhood around it. So, that's kind of a really fast walkthrough. There's a lot of details in here and we're very excited and happy to answer any questions you might have. But, as we move into this multi-phase process, this is something you'll be seeing a lot of us because there will be multiple approvals as we move through it. And we're excited to have that conversation with the community and the partnership to bring this project through to reality. So, with that, we can open up for questions or if you want to take public comments, however you would like.
Okay, thank you. So, I think we're gonna go to public comment right away? Yep. So, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. It is 6:20. Caitlin, do we have any forms?
Yep, we do. The first one is Nyla Friat, 44 East Relling Avenue.
Okay. I would like to thank and support the Brineck family for the preliminary plans for the proposed development. Since the plan was developed with information provided by the housing task force, as well as providing consideration for existing wetlands, this development is important for the future. I hope Veridian will carry out plans in a manner that provide housing needed in the community without tip funding since this is an important aspect of the plan. I hope with community input, the issue of the road on North Division Street can be resolved sooner rather than later since development before it is solved could negatively impact Water Tower Hill Park. Thank you.
Next, we have Linda Zimler at 306 North Division Street.
I know I talked to some of these guys already on the board. My concern is, I don't know if you guys know, that welcome to Wanaquay sign, is that gonna stay there?
Yes. It's getting moved a little further down the road. Brian was supposed to point that out. Sorry. (laughing).
It is. Currently the sign, uh, let's see here, on here. Ah. Oh, I had to walk up. Currently the sign sits right here. And what we're gonna do is actually create a new entry point up closer to the intersection so that it is still in a visible point. And we're happy to work with the community to determine how that gets sorted out. But, the idea that it could move up to the intersection near the lights and have a more prominent setting where everybody can see it as they come in.
Okay. Good luck.
We know this is a great challenge. Yes.
I know I talked to Phil, I talked to Chris, and Dr. Moran. You better not destroy it.
Absolutely not.
You know why?
Historic.
'Cause a lot of guys put a lot of work into those signs. And that sucker is cemented in good, 'cause I know, my late husband put that sucker sign in. And don't destroy it.
We appreciate it.
Because, that's my only concern is really that sign does not get destroyed because there's been a lot of, there's a lot of guys that still live in Wanaquay that put a lot of hard work into it. And so, another question, if it goes through, when is it gonna start? They haven't, nothing's been said yet?
We can answer questions at the end if that's... We'll answer questions when everybody's done their public comments.
Okay.
That's okay. Any others?
Yep. Kurt Briney, 6210 Schumacher Road.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody or the ones that came in and took time to comment. And I appreciate the positive comments. Thanks very much. And the one thing I would like to say and emphasize is, as this process goes forward, the reason our family is so excited about this project is because it's different. And it brings a need to the village of Wanaquay. And over the decades, we've obviously had several opportunities to do something other than farm with this property. But, when Veridian presented this to us, they, one of the first questions they asked was, what do you see or what do you want as the property owner? And, you know, one of the key things were, try and maintain the heritage. So, they've done that. We were aware of what the needs were in the village due to the housing task force and obviously, Veridian did their research also. And when they presented their preliminary plan to our family, which really hasn't changed much at all, we were just very impressed with how they tied into the existing areas around the community, the green space, the parks, Schumacher Park. And my, what I'm gonna caution is, when you're making recommendations or providing input how to move this process forward, keep in mind, ideally, we want this to be different. There's plenty of areas and plenty of land and we have developers that are very good at providing, you know, more of the same. But, we want this to be something unique. So, please, you know, exercise caution and not take away from, you know, what they're trying to do and what we're trying to do as the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we had for slips.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board this evening?
Robert McPherson, 1703 Alexandria Court. I'm kind of gonna repeat a little bit what I said at the Plan Commission. I, you know, I've spoken in the past about plug usage and appropriate use. Again, I'd like to reiterate, this is a very good use of it. The community is definitely getting something back, in this case, affordable housing and, you know, some good green space, you know, layout in there. Something that wasn't addressed in this that I'm kind of throwing out as a softball because I am a huge supporter of this because it is going to bring affordable housing, is that maybe we could address the price point on some of the houses that, you know, will be in that affordable range so that it can be out for the public to hear in this setting. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
This is just an anecdotal thing. My name is Mary Ellen Carney. I live at 317 West Main Street. And I find it very interesting that it was my grandfather's brother who originally owned that land. And he and my grandfather bet at the time which way Wanaquay was gonna grow. And so, I like the fact that it's different and that it kind of keeps the character. And we need more of that in Wanaquay. You know, it fit very well with the kind of character that we see on the original planning of Wanaquay, the type of family homes and different, not all cookie cutters. So, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Somebody got in under the bell there? Anyone else? Okay. Then I'm gonna close the public hearing, 6:26. Brian, do you want to address the timing question?
Well, I was gonna say, I think it may be more appropriate for the developer. There were two questions that I heard. One, will it start? And then whether they're in a position at this point to provide more information on price points or whether that will come later. Sure. I, from a starting standpoint, we'd love to get going here as quickly as possible given how wet the last few summers have been and how thick the roads are required to be built here in Wanaquay. So, we, you know, it adds a few weeks to the development schedule, but we'd like to get going this summer. Hopefully, you know, as soon as possible, June, July would be great. So, that's when we're in a position to get going as quickly as possible and assuming we can keep going and having success with staff and everyone else through the process. As far as price points, I, yes, I'll go on record and say that we will. There will be fee simple homes in here under $300,000. I can't, I've got a very elaborate pro forma, which I'm sure you would appreciate, the many layers, the levels, and inputs that go into that. But, it also will be, this will be a 10 to 12-phase development. So, that means it's gonna be 10 to 12 years for this to get built out. As we get going, you incur some additional costs that you weren't anticipating originally. There might be, you know, as we work through Division Street, there might be some additional costs or there might be less. So, we've got a pretty big budget, but we, every day we get a little more zeroed in and then we can focus more on what those price points are gonna be. I will say that we're trying to target more of an average sales price, right now about 365, because that's exactly what the housing study said, to quote here, that the seventy, the median income, the median income in Wanaquay is 78,000, 78 to 99,000 a year. I had our lender, preferred lender, run the rough numbers, assuming 10% down on a PITI of 3.75%, and assuming that their 35% of their monthly income would be towards a house payment. That means they can afford a house, a mortgage for a house at about 365,000. So, really have taken the analytics as far as I can get right now and that's what we're targeting for an average. Now, the orange houses, yeah, those will be more. I mean, that's sitting up top of the hill and that's more of a luxury product. But, that's the goal here is to have economic diversity throughout the community. So, as we get closer, I'd be happy to sit down with you and go over numbers with you too. So, that's what I'm willing to commit to right now.
Thanks, Chris. Okay.
So, we're not looking for any action tonight. Our, we wanted to keep this on the agenda for the public hearing. So, to the extent that we got comments from the public that should be incorporated in the general development plan, we can do that. I think I can tell you that the comments that we can, got tonight from the public are generally consistent with the comments that the Plan Commission heard. The Plan Commission did vote to recommend approval of the preliminary plat and the general development plan to the village board with some conditions. Those are all identified on page 28 of your packet within the staff memo. So, I mean, I think, I'm certainly willing to walk through any of those comments that came through the Plan Commission if you'd like, or a few other questions. Otherwise, you know, the expect, our hope at this point is to bring this back to you for action to the board at your next meeting in January. This is going to be, you know, at this point, this is, there's four action items that would come to you at the same time. One would be the annexation ordinance, another would be an annexation agreement, then you'd have the general development plan, and you'd have the preliminary plat. As the, as Veridian has noted throughout this process, this is, for zoning purposes, this is a general development plan. And as they move forward, there's going to be different specific implementation plans that come for each... specific implementation plans that come for each phase of the developments. And then my understanding is that when they do move forward with the final plat, they're going to final plat this kind of in phases. So, the final plat that comes back will have to be consistent with the preliminary plat, but it's all not gonna be one thing, it's gonna be done in phases. So, I think that's kind of a general overview, certainly willing to answer whatever questions you may have of us, or I'm sure the applicants available can answer any questions you may have.
Questions from board members?
Like the 88 twin homes, that's dwelling units, right? 88 dwelling units?
Correct, correct. Yes. Joey, any questions tonight?
No, I think they were pretty well covered at Plan Commission for me.
Okay, Kristen?
Likewise.
Bill?
Turn on the duplexes, basically, is that the...
In this case, they're be divided into fee simple lots.
So, it'd be a two, two-unit building with a property line down the middle in the party wall, and then each side would be for sale.
Bill?
No questions, just comment. We're happier with the park plans, every time we meet with them, they're getting pretty much what we think we'd like to have. It's an ongoing process. I personally would like to see Division Street extended, and we, they think they can handle that and save the sledding hill. I think it's important that Division Street get extended, because Wanake's a difficult town to go east and west in. We gotta have reasons not to send everybody back to Main Street every once in a while. So, I think we're getting there.
Aaron?
Nothing major right now.
Hey, Chris, someone had asked me about how the fire people deal with alley homes, and I've not, I don't know if that's come up before, Todd, or if you guys have addressed that. I'm not on the fire committee, so I don't...
Yeah, so, as we've designed neighborhoods in Sun Prairie, Middleton, Madison, throughout Dan County that have the carriage lanes, we've taken that into account, not just fire trucks, but garbage trucks, plumbing, all the various ways that these have to be served with, and accessible for the municipality utilities to get through, in through, into the project and throughout. So, we'll work very closely with the fire department, we've had some initial discussions with them, and we'll continue to have those conversations as we move in. But each of the buildings will meet all the fire code requirements in terms of access, and actually, the carriage lane in other neighborhoods have offered a second point of access for a lot of lots as well. It's designed so that it has 15 feet of pavement within the alley, which gives the ability for trucks of all sizes to go through. So, it's something we've worked through, we've had, you know, I think the first public alleys in Madison in 80 years were dedicated in Grandview, those have been in place now for 20-plus years. As much as we'd like to say there haven't been, there have been fires in some of the neighborhoods that have carriage lanes, and did not result in, you know, obviously, there's damage to the homes, which we'd like to avoid at all costs, but the fire department were able to get in there and deal with them in appropriate manners.
Now, I, in reading through there, I think your covenants kinda address street parking and et cetera, so that would cut down on the restrictions of getting into fight a fire.
Yes.
So, and that was, went back to your neighborhood association that's gonna be governing this and et cetera?
Yeah.
But anyway, there's, there's some covenants that address street parking and restrict people being able to block access there.
And beyond the covenants, the design of the carriage lanes themselves reinforce, you know, where people can and can't park by garage placement and setbacks from the right-of-way of the alley, just to make sure, we don't have any half parking stalls, for example, where one car kinda hangs out into the alley. They're all designed to make sure that can't happen. Either you have a full parking stall, or it's very clearly not a spot to put your car. And so, that kind of is a, a physical reinforcement of the need to make sure the, the carriage lanes are open and accessible for people to get through.
Parking for the big park is where?
So, we're looking at potentially some on-street parking, but that's something, as we get into the design of that park, there have been questions about, should there be a parking lawn in there? That's something we can pursue as we move forward, but initially, the concept was to have some perpendicular parking on-street, similar to what you have along some of the other parks within the community, to give some, some points of additional on-street parking along that frontage. There are also two other access points out to the adjoining streets, which give points to access to additional on-street parking as well.
I just wanted to...
I thought you were waving at me. Go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I, I agree with what Brian said, and to Gary's point, after the Plan Commission meeting, but before the holiday break, we did have a internal meeting over at Wanake Utilities with Strand, and Kevin, and Tim, and a whole bunch of other folks, and folks from the fire department were there to address some issues, and I know that we have a meeting scheduled with Dan and some other folks, I think it's next week to address some of those issues. So, yeah, fire has been very involved in the process.
Just real quick, can you educate me, I, again, tonight's a public hearing, there is no vote tonight?
There's not gonna be a vote tonight, because we wanna be able to take action on the, we don't wanna take action on the zoning before we take action on the annexation ordinance and the annexation agreements, and those are not on the agenda for tonight. We wanna have everything come as a package.
Okay, okay.
But, we, there will not, we won't be, unless the Village Board wants us to, we will not be having other, any other public hearings on the preliminary plat or the general development plan, that was the purpose for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
And in part, in case we had gotten comments from the public or from the Village Board where they wanted to see changes to the general development plan, this gave us kind of that buffer to be able to implement those. But so far, I think we've heard everything consistent with what happened at the Plan Commission.
So, that'll be at the next meeting, though?
That's what we're, you know, shooting for.
Well, we, so we'll have everything ready then for the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you, I mean, unless, I don't think you guys are gonna have to give another presentation, but, yeah.
Okay.
So, I, I just have a couple of comments, questions, not to be negative or positive, just questions, mainly to address a couple of questions that were asked, and to make sure that we're clear what your answer's going to be for them. One is Water Tower Park Hill, the sledding hill. People are wanting to be assured that that is not gonna be taken away, and that you're going to have a plan for that ahead of time. Is that something engineer-wise that you can take, that you can put that in place and say, this is what it's going to be?
The Division Street extension is something we're gonna work very closely with, with the village on, because it's partially on our property, partially, as you mentioned, within the park, so there's gonna need to be a lot of close coordination to do that. It is not gonna be put in as part of the first phase, so it's something we're gonna work closely to implement and come up with a plan that we've heard loud and clear minimizes the impact on the sledding. We've had some initial conversations with Public Works about design criteria, and are working closely together to identify what that solution needs to be, and, and we will work, and we'll certainly commit to making sure that that conversation continues to go forward, because it has to be designed hand-in-hand with the village. And so, we're gonna be working on some engineering solutions to try to see what we can do, whether that means current alignment, whether that means slight adjustments, looking at the, not just, as Dan said, the K-value at the Plan Commission, which is a fancy way to say the curve going up and down the hill, and then just making sure that the grading is done in a way that recognizes the importance of that sledding hill. And we've looked at the underground utilities already, so we think we got a pretty good solution in hand, we're just gonna have to continue to work closely with the village to implement that.
Acceptable?
I'm, I...
I just wanna make sure your, 'cause that, that really didn't get addressed, I wanna make sure you get your question answered.
Okay, yeah, what I would like to see is have a, a plan for that hill before anything else is developed, so that it's not developed, and then you say, oh, we can't do this because this road has already been put in here, or these apartments are already slated for here. I would like to know what the plan is before the development starts.
The Division Street plan itself will, will take a, a year or two to get through. That's reality, but working with the village, the village has just as much of a 50% stake as, probably even more of a hand in this. This is their request to put Division Street through. This is, this is really coming from Public Works. They wanna see that street go through, we are working with them to try and figure out how do we put this street through at an efficient price and also save the sledding hill. Our first phase is gonna be this area right here. This, I'm sorry, this area right here, that's what we're developing next year. We're gonna eventually work our way north, so we're talking really about two to four years before Division Street, construction on that would, would commence. As we work our way through this, that's how we'll get more answers that, that will define what that plan will look like, and ultimately, we wanna save the sledding hill too, because it's an amenity to our, our customers and, and our homeowners and, and our development as well. So, it's something we gotta just work through together, there's a lot of things to uncover there.
One other thing to point out is that, while we're preliminary plating, the entire parcel will be final plating in small sections, so we won't be locked into our final lading adjacent to that Division Street until that is solved. So, as we head north towards the intersection of, of Verlaine and Division, we'll have to work through and identify solutions to that extension, including plans for Division Street. I would assume, probably before that final plat of those adjoining lots are gonna be allowed to be approved. So, we've, we've got some steps we've gotta take, we understand the importance of the sledding hill and, and echo that.
Thank you.
Secondly, to the sign that we're moving, I think you heard loud and clear, there's emotions that go with that sign, and we need to make sure we, we do everything we can. To Mrs. Ziegler, I would say that there's churches that are over 100 years old that have been moved half a block or blocks down streets.
I know.
So, this, this can be done, and I'm sure they're gonna take every caution necessary to make sure it's done in a good way. So, that was the other comment I had. Materials, I, I want to get more affordable housing into our community. I don't think anybody on our board is gonna say, yeah, we don't want that. We want that. But we also don't want, we wanna make sure that with your materials, for example, if we put shingles on buildings, that lasts five years versus 25 years, to get it into affordable price, that doesn't help the person who is needing an affordable home in five years to have to make replacement, or, or soon, you don't get what I'm going at. I haven't heard this problem for any of your housing developments, but I've heard it from community. And if you can assure and say that our materials are gonna be good quality materials, our, our housing is going to be well-done, adequate, which I'm assuming that's all going to be, but I want you to just say it, that, that that's all gonna be good.
Yeah, first of all, if we put shingles on that were falling off in five years, we wouldn't have any customers, we'd be in deep trouble. But I, I understand where the, that there's a stigma that has long been with the, the history of, of, say, production building in Madison, and that was Midland and Don Simon, and those were the two who both started in Wanake, by the way. And, when they merged, become Veridian in, in 2000, really, there was this, this big push for quality then, and that's when David Simon took it upon himself to, to get out there and really up the standards and the quality of, of the homes that were being built, to the point where now, we're using the, the same materials, the same vendors, the same reputable trades that, that are in all the neighborhoods that you see here today, are all being used by Veridian. It just comes down to supply chain management, price point, and, and controlling a lot of the material costs, that is why we can build at a lower price point, we're still achieving margins. So, yes, we absolutely would, will 100% back up the quality of our homes. We also take, we conduct a very thorough survey to each one of our homeowners, and we have a 96% five-star rating with our homeowners. Anytime something comes in that's less than four stars, they get a call right away from someone on our staff to find out what happened, what didn't go right, was there a miscommunication? Was there something that's truly defective? And we have, we track anything and everything if there is something that, that, from a defective part or component that might not be achieving the, the standards that we require. But we have a very good warranty, full one-year warranty on the house, and then also, beyond that, is a, a five-year on, on plumbing, and then 20 on roof and, and everything else. So, that's all there, and, and it's something that, that we look for repeat customers. In order to do that, you have to have a quality product, so...
So, thank you. Again, I wasn't trying to be negative, I wanted to give you that opportunity to tell the community that.
Yeah.
Make sure they knew that.
I understand.
You had already pointed out in your previous comments about what we put into our roads is a little different, that we require a little bit thicker base, everything than other communities, and what does that mean for the road? It's gonna last longer, right?
Yes.
That's our goal. So, that's going back to the quality, to make sure people understand we want a good quality community all across the board. It doesn't matter if you make $10 an hour, or you make $100 an hour, you should all have that same good quality, and...
Yes, and we have, we also have a very strict HOA that, you know, as you're building your way through this, we control and can issue citations of anything that becomes unsightly throughout the process at, at any point, so...
Perfect. That's all my questions, comments. Gary, do you have another?
Just one more comment, and this is, you know, Kent or Kevin aren't here this evening, but stormwater's a big issue everywhere. This will be by far the most dense area that we have in development in the community, so I know, here they have an area that talks about Maxim, maximum impervious surface ratio is 80%, and I'm not sure exactly what that means, but there's a lot of roofs, there's a lot of driveways and sidewalks, and there's not a lot of grass. So, I just wanna make sure that our stormwater is, you know, controls are adequate to meet the needs, and I'm sure that, you know, they've looked at this, but that's gonna be critical in this development, I think, is how we handle that stormwater, and make sure that we don't have issues.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other comments from board members?
Can you remind me what the purple is versus the yellow?
Sure, the purple is our, that's more of the entry level for, for the millennials or, or young adults or young families. Product, and then the blue is the, meant for the Haven series, which is for, we're really targeting a 50 and older demographic. Again, offering full season-round landscape and snow removal and everything else with the, with the HOA packages that they are paying into.
Hate that you said 50 and older, 'cause I hit that demographic. So, anyway, this year, but, for some reason, I feel like I, I do snow removal for my dad, so that's kinda weird, but anyway, it's all good. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Forward to next month.
All right, let's get back to it. Okay, next we have license permits, discuss and take action, operator license applications for Kaylin Robish and Jesse Keen.
We recommend approval of the operator license included in your packet, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage, beverage server training course and review by the Wanake Police Department.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the license applications for Kaylin Robish and Jesse Keen, subject to proper licensing and inspection by the police department.
Okay, motion by Phil Owens?
Second.
Second by Bill Rannam. Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, as have it.
With approval. Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn, you said wrong.
I said wrong.
Move to adjourn, Bill, Joe Zeltzer Burger, second by Bill Rannam.
Dang.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, as have it. Thanks, everyone.
I haven't eaten yet.